At seven o'clock PM. Please note, we are live streaming on our YouTube channel and will be recording that. It will be available on our YouTube channel following the meeting. Please rise and join us for the pleasure of the evening.
Selectively, this is the Latin of the United States, America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I would like to introduce our school committee members and admin in attendance this evening for our regular school committee. On my left, I have Ms. Davenport, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Mr. Guthrie, Superintendent Powers. On my right, I have Ms. Tijon Cisse, Ms. Foy Thomas, Mr. Collins, our Rayham Select Board Member, Ms. Conrad Laberinto, and Vice Chair, Mr. Loesch. And I am Rachel King, School Committee Chair. We also have in attendance Assistant Superintendent Berry and Mrs. McDougal, our Recording Secretary, as well as other members of the admin team in attendance. Our first item on the agenda is our item from Executive Session, Gratification of the Union Contract, Maintenance, Custodian, and Grounds. As stated, we just returned from Executive Session and we have one item to report out on regarding Maintenance, Custodian, and Grounds Union Contract. As I stated, we also have Mr. Ken Collins, Rayham Select Board Member, as our Town Representative, Voting Member this evening. I will now turn the floor over to Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, the Negotiations Subcommittee Chair.
And at this point, I just will highlight a few of the... Sorry. It's working, yes. At this point in time, I will just highlight a few of the high points from the contract. The contract is for a three-year period, starting July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028. Some of the language in the contract includes clarifying language around promotions and lateral moves, language around overtime and standby pay, some changes in the accumulation of sick pay, an increase in the clothing allowance amount, the addition of tuition reimbursement for relevant courses, which is new to this contract, and a constant increase at 2% for each year of the contract.
Thank you, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto. I will accept a motion on the floor right now and then we can discuss this and have any questions. I'll entertain a motion to accept the memorandum of agreement between the Bridgewater-Rayham Regional School Committee and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, AFL-CIO, State Council 93, Local 1700, Maintenance, Custodian, and Grounds Union for the period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2028. Motion has been made by Ms. Conrad Laberinto, second by Mr. Loesch. Do we have a discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Conrad, I'm sorry, Mrs. McDougal, is this a phone call? Do you... Yes, okay, I just wanted to confirm. Do you want to call names from where you are?
Mr. Loesch?
Aye.
Mrs. Conrad Laberinto?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes.
Mrs. Davenport?
Yes.
Ms. Foy Thomas?
Yes.
Mr. Guthrie?
Yes.
Mrs. D'Angelo?
Yes.
Mr. Collins?
Aye.
Thank you, motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Conrad Laberinto, and the rest of the Negotiations Subcommittee, as well as the Maintenance, Custodian, and Grounds bargaining team. And thank you to our Rayham Select Board Member, Mr. Collins, for being here this evening. We appreciate that. Next, we have Correspondence and Recognition. We have community emails first. We did receive since the last meeting an email from a community member regarding the state, the status of the tennis courts at the O'Donoghue Middle School in Bridgewater. Mr. Powers did respond to that and is following up with the town of Bridgewater regarding repairs, whether they'll be done by the school district or by the town. So they are working on that to get those tennis courts up and running again. And then we did receive several emails from parents regarding transportation questions from the start of school and concerns regarding some bus stops. So Mr. Powers did respond to that, as well as Ms. D'Angelo as the Transportation Chair. We did have a recognition of the BR marching band. I believe the marching band director was not able to be here this evening. Mr. Powers, did you want to say anything about that?
Yes, so our high school marching band did host through US Bands competition, an early preseason competition at the high school last weekend. There were four high schools there. Again, our students did amazing, I was so proud of them. If you had the opportunity to view one of these US Bands competitions, you know how impressive they can be. You know, from a small band to a large band, it really doesn't matter. It's all about the performance and, you know, we had such a great turnout. I know in the past, they've hosted these later in the season with more high schools participating. But this was a preseason, kind of an early warm-up for the high schools participating. But they did an amazing job and can't wait to invite all the students in the marching band and to come and be recognized here.
Thank you. I did see lots of photos that they had shared following the competition, and that's amazing. So for them to host it here and to come in first place, so that was amazing. So we are so proud of them for doing so well. We also had the school renaming ceremony, Mr. Fitzgibbons, did you want to say a few words regarding that?
Sure. We've... Years ago, the Bridgewater-Rayham School Committee, when the now O'Donoghue Middle School, was still the old BR High School, dedicated that school to Ed O'Donoghue, the first superintendent of the fully regionalized district last year or so. We voted to ask the Town Council of Bridgewater to rename it. They went along with that and we had a ceremony and, you know, finally able to unveil the new name on the building over the month of August. And all of Mr. O'Donoghue's family was down and they were very appreciative. And as Mr. Arthur Wyman said, who used to be the Chair of this body, he was long overdue for a man who'd done a lot for the district. So just a great turnout from the BR family, a great turnout for the O'Donoghue family. And you can now call it the O'Donoghue Middle School, like the Williams Intermediate and the Mitchell Elementary and the La Liberty Intermediate and the Merrill Elementary, Early Childhood. So we're working on this one, I guess, next, right?
Thank you. And thank you so much for taking care of that, Mr. Fitzgibbons, and presiding over that. I appreciate that. So now are we calling it OMS? Is that the term now? Next, we have public comment. Do we have anyone in the public that would like to see just admin? All right, seeing none, I will move on. Mr. Foy, do you want to name a group? Thank you. For the record, we have no public comment to be... Thank you. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. I will entertain a motion to approve the Consent Agenda as presented, which includes minutes dated August 20th, 2025, approval of payroll warrants dated August 21st, 2025, September 5th, 2025, and September 12th, 2025, acceptance of state and federal grants, personnel report, the high school graduation date of Friday, May 29th, 2026, at 6:00 PM on the Bridgewater-Rayham Regional High School Multi-Purpose Field, with a rain date of Saturday, May 30th, 2026, at 10:00 AM, and acceptance of a grant in the amount of $1,750 from the Bridgewater Cultural Council to Rainwater Players. Motion made by Mr. Loesch, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And all my senior parents know that date, very exciting. Next, we have Educational Report. So I just want to make a note of this. We have a lot of new administrators and directors that we haven't met before. We also have new school committee members. So I thought it was important to make sure that they get a chance to come before the committee, kind of give an overview on what they're working on, what their goals are, so we can get to know them and vice versa. So we will have one or two administrators come to our meetings just to give a brief report at each meeting, so we can meet all of them, principals, people in admin, et cetera. So this evening was the Special Education Department of Report with Ms. D'Angelo. As we know, she started July 1st, so she sat a couple of months in the district. And this has been a huge focus of the school committee to try and get that department on track and everyone working in the same direction for that population that we really are concerned about. So thank you so much for being here, Ms. D'Angelo. I think you have a presentation, correct? So we're going to go down there so we can see that, so thank you.
So for those of you who haven't had a pleasure meeting, I'm Jen Hensel. I'm the Director of Student Services here for the Bridgewater-Rayham Regional School District. I did a couple of slides just to help kind of focus. But at any point you have any questions or concerns, feel free to interrupt me and ask those questions. So this is just a quick overview of our services. So currently, right now, there's about 1,200 students receiving services through IEP plans in the district, about 400 students receiving accommodations through L.A. support plans, and about 50 of our students receive their educational programming outside of the district. We provide... we have related service providers in a variety of areas, speech and language, OT, PT, physical therapists, counselors, behavior checks, and also teacher of the visually impaired and deaf and hard care. We have three administrators currently that work with me across the district. They... This was one of our focuses at the beginning of the year, to create an equitable kind of distribution and oversight. One of the things that we found was inconsistent practices and a lack of effective communication across all of our buildings. So one of the main things we looked at is how do we get that messaging out and how do we get everyone going in the same direction, which Chair King kind of alluded to. So one of the things we looked at was the three leadership positions in special ed that oversee the district and how we could create some continuity. One of the things that we heard a lot about was that transitioning between buildings and between levels. So this model was really to support that transition as well as the services happening. So if you look, the middle schools will have one administrator above to kind of keep that consistency across the middle school and then also support Bridgewater-Rayham High School at the ninth grade level, looking at that transition here. And then we kept some continuity in the Merrill, La Liberty, and Mitchell, with the staff member who had been here last year. And then Ms. Tuim, who's our newest administrator to join the team, she will be primarily at Williams and Bridgewater-Rayham in that 10 to 12 plus program. And then I have to give a special shout-out to my first two months weren't crazy, but good crazy. And the people that kept me afloat were the administrative assistants that worked across the hall. Anytime I had a question, whether it was who to go to or who someone was or, you know, where the fax machine was or any of that thing, these people kept me going. So I cannot say enough about them and the knowledge that they have provided for me as I transitioned into the district, so. Couple of early successes, though, as, you know, Chair King mentioned, it hasn't been too long. So we kind of looked at a couple of things in our first few months. One of the big things was looking at creating and implementing consistent processes and practices across all of our buildings. And that, again, came with that clear messaging and that consistent messaging through our admins. We also have to review our contracted services and create some internal capacity. So hiring is a little bit of a challenge because of our situation, but an opportunity to that challenge was really looking at the candidates we were hiring and what they could do in their capacity to provide services in district. So that was a really nice opportunity for us, when we were looking at hiring new candidates, looking at some of those candidates who had credentials and expertise in some of those areas that we were contracting out previously. So that really, that kind of challenging piece of hiring turned into a real positive for us in some of our positions. The equitable allocation of responsibilities among staff, that's something we're looking at, too. So a big piece of growing in the right direction is also having a strong culture and a commitment to making great decisions for kids. So a piece of that is making sure that everyone on our team is holding, being held accountable and working towards that goal with us. So that's been a big piece, too, looking at those responsibilities and making sure everyone's held to that same standard. And then again, the examination of usage of electronic materials and subscriptions. So we all love technology. We all love to make things easier for us and engage into our students. But we also have a lot of subscriptions to different tools and resources. So another piece of the work that we've been trying to do in the last couple of weeks as our renewals come up is to look at usage levels. So anytime something comes in and there's a request to renew everything, we're asking our vendors to provide some usage calculations and data so that we know how often it's being used, by what populations it's being used, and in what capacity. And then looking to see what our other products are that may be a repetition or duplication of a similar service. And then really reaching out to our service providers to see what you use, what is most beneficial, and where can we streamline some of those resources. Any questions? Looking ahead, so one of the big things that we're looking ahead about is creating proactive, open communication to rebuild our parent relationships. So that has been a little bit of a work in the beginning. Over the summer, I had the fortunate opportunity to meet a lot of great families who came in with some real frustrations and an understanding of where those frustrations came from. So part of the work that we're doing is really looking at how can we proactively engage our families and start rebuilding those relationships and that trust so that we can work together for good outcomes. So that's a big piece of what we're doing. We're going to continue to build on that internal capacity, so looking at the strengths that the staff has already there and how can we use that, those strengths, to really benefit. One of the things we looked at is transitioning from... These are our de-escalation strategies. So looking at moving out, away from CPI into safety care training, that was something that some of the staff who are trained and train up other staff members have requested, so we're looking into that. There is a little bit of a financial benefit to it as well. CPI has a higher cost per renewal membership for everyone that we certify. And we do certify quite a few people in the district, where safety care is at much lesser cost once the initial cost has been pulled out. And then another big focus for us this year is, again, to never fall below the same direction. We have to have common understanding and common expectations. So a big piece of that is going to be working with Alan Blum. He is a guru of special ed deals around IEP development and IEP practices. So he's going to work with us and do some teaching for our special education staff over the course of the next year and work on really honing in on our IEPs, honing in on our services, and making sure we're meeting the mark and doing what we need to do for our students. And then the last one is another collaboration, looking at our behavioral and mental health initiatives, more specifically, looking at proactive approaches. So what can we do to benefit all students that are proactive approaches with our counseling staff? And then looking at how we can partner with some of our community partners locally, but also some at the state level, when we have Friday Minds and the Rayne Center, who are really big organizations in Massachusetts, who provide a lot of resources and support. And that's it? Yeah, yeah, can you go back up? Do you want me to go down? Okay.
Thank you so much, Ms. D'Angelo. I'll open it up to my members for questions. But I just want to say, I really appreciate how it was very thoughtful and your aligning things from those top down, which I think we definitely need, and also looking at the efficiency between technology and staffing, which we definitely need right now, so thank you so much. Plus all the personal relationships, which I think is a huge part of it, so thank you. Do we have questions and comments from Ms. D'Angelo?
Any more? Thank you for the presentation. I really don't have any questions right now, but I did want to say I'm really excited about even just the language and mindset you seem to have about it, rather than using the word, you know, challenge is like a term, like you use like opportunity. And I think that's will be great for the staff and it's just an awesome look to have in regards to it, so thank you, I'm excited for it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Yes, thank you. Welcome aboard. If you paid any attention to the Bridgewater-Rayham School Committee, you know, I'm going to tell you that how we treat our most vulnerable students is how we should be judged as a district. I've said that from the beginning, since I got on here in 2021, still believe it today. I'll believe it 20 years from now, if I'm still around. And... But what I want to encourage, not only yourself, but also the superintendent sitting here, is looking at creative ways to say yes. We can't say yes to everything, but too often in school administration, town administration, the easy go-to answer is no. And I think, you know, what you're saying, let's rebuild collaboration and parent trust, I think that's a big part of getting there, is saying yes, but, not no, and. And that's important, I think, in those, so I just make that suggestion. And then one question for you. Sixteen hundred, if I counted right, 1,200 IEPs, 500, 400-ish accommodations out of a district of 5,000 to 5,500 students. Is that ratio average for the state, smaller than the state, or above the state average? Or could you speculate why?
Yeah, so the state average definitely includes L.A. support plans. So when they give statistical data at the state level, it really just states in consideration our students' disabilities. So if we are looking at it, we would know who would have relative data to compare to, to 1,200 students receiving services. On top of that, there's a breakdown that kind of goes into it, looking at the level of need among those 1,200 students. So to say that there we are compared to others, that's hard to say, because I think it looks at the demographics, it looks at, you know, our service continuum, it looks at a lot of things. But I would say on average, most districts fall between 16 and 18%, just giving you like a general percentage.
And we're closer to 20, so it's higher than the state average?
20%. Yes, a lot.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Oh, Mr. Loesch?
So one thing from the presentation, and I really liked some of the approaches you're taking. I think they're very proactive and got questions for staying in this role because I have this job and it can be brutal at times. One question, just kind of comparing the Personnel Report and looking at the school psychologist situation, how are we in terms of school psychologists and looking at things like paying vacations?
Yeah, we're great. So I think that some of that equitable allocation is what we're looking at. We actually took that, again, kind of wasn't very clashy, but we turned that resignation situation into a positive. What we have heard over the last several years with our school psychologists, their position has also encompassed the Team Chair role, which is the person who facilitates meetings and does the paperwork side of IEP processes. So the feedback that we have heard from school psychologists is that some of them do not love that role. They love the school psychology role, working with students and the assessment piece, but that other side is something that they're just not comfortable with or they feel it kind of compromises the work that they're doing on the other side. So we took that as an opportunity to roll out our first Team Chair position. So we posted for that the other day. So what we are doing is we're kind of combining two schools, to share a school psychologist for the assessment component of it and then a Team Chair to do that piece that's more involved in the process. So, you know, that's something that we're looking, again, strategically to say, okay, well, this, this. Another piece of that is we've also just sent out an email today, actually, for school psychologists who want to participate in a Team Chair job-alien institute this morning. It's one meeting a month from now until May. So if there's any, I actually have four when I left this evening, who are interested in that. So that's another way to either build their comfort level or their capacity and make them, you know, a better team member who can facilitate those meetings. But yeah, the school psychology, the high school one we're interviewing right now, there's a couple of applicants, so we're interviewing for that. We're fortunate that our school psychologists here do cognitive side testing and our special education teachers do the academic. We're monitoring the number of consents that come in to make sure that we're not falling behind without a person in that seat. So, yeah, feel confident, Robert.
Thank you.
Thank you for your explanation, Mr. Loesch. And I would just commend you for being innovative and being thoughtful. I think a Team Chair position is something that we've talked about. Many other districts have Team Chairs and we seem to be late to the game on that one, so I applaud kind of your ability to kind of innovate and be flexible around some of the needs.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Powers.
Yes, I just want to take this opportunity to acknowledge and thank Ms. D'Angelo. It's been a sigh of relief to have her join the district. How we obviously appreciate all that Mr. Leonard did for us this past year. He really restored a sense of pride to the district. But we are ripe for change and Ms. D'Angelo, without a doubt, is that person to lead us through this. And so we're very excited. You've already heard some of the positive changes that she's made here in the district, and it really has only been two months and really a few weeks of stuck to school year. So I know there's great things to come in the Student Services Department and in her vision. So I just want to commend her already for all the efforts she's put into this.
Thank you, I appreciate all the time you're giving.
Like I said, to Ms. Davenport's point, I really love how you embrace this and your mindset, so I think that's definitely what we needed with everything going on. So I really appreciate that and you have our full support. If you need anything, please let us know. So we really appreciate it and thank you for being here.
Thank you. Yeah, we're doing great. Well, thank you.
Next, we have the Principal Report of Merrill and La Liberty. We have Mrs. Westell and Mrs. Richards.
This is Kitty, if I may, just while they're coming up to the podium. Obviously, you know, again, another public acknowledgement for Ms. Westell and Ms. Richards. As you know, last year, I made the difficult decision not to fill the L.A. lifting principal position. Mrs. Parkes moved on to Westport to a promotional position. And just given the timing of that and just with the kind of unknown challenges that we were going to be faced with, the budget not being unsettled, I did make the decision to ask Ms. Westell to be the principal of all schools. And I approached Ms. Richards to see if she would be willing to go over and support the great work that's already happening at L.A. lifting and Merrill. And she was willing to do that, so I thank her for her sacrifice, obviously. She has another position and I know she's trying to hang on to that full-time position as much as she can, but really wearing both hats. You know, obviously, I know I've asked her to take on what some would see as a, you know, a challenging situation, but I think to use Ms. Davenport's term, it was a great opportunity for both of them and I truly appreciate it with that great feedback already on how things are going in the start of school. And that's because of their efforts. They obviously are a team and working strong together. But they were also working strong with the families and the staff and the students. And it shows with Mrs. Berry and I when we're over there. We see a lot of smiling faces from everybody, from the adults to the kids. And it's because of their efforts, really strong leadership in both of those buildings. So I just wanted to thank them all for that.
Thank you. Giving a chair, members of the school committee, and Superintendent Powers.
Thank you. Giving a chair, members of the school committee with the power, of course, I want to express that I am very honored to be the principal of both Merrill and Law Liberty schools, and I thank you very much for this opportunity. I'm happy to report that things are going very well, and we have a great start to the school year. On the first day of school, Mrs. Richards and I, Mrs. Richards welcomed one hundred and forty-two first graders, and I welcomed five hundred and thirty-five Law Liberty students. I have to say, it was wonderful to see the former Merrill schools thrown up, some of whom I didn't recognize because it had been a couple of years. There were a lot of hugs getting off the bus, a lot of smiles, and some confused faces, I have to say, some bullies thinking, oh, we're not the wrong school, no, we're not. So, it was, it was great. When Mr. Powers and I first spoke about being, me being the principal of both buildings, I knew right away that it was very important for me to be present in both buildings each day, and wanted to be seen by staff and students each day. Fortunately, I am able to do that with the help and support of Mrs. Richards. We have created a schedule where we split our day in half. So, from the time we get there in the morning until twelve o'clock, one of us is at one, one building, and then from twelve-thirty to the end of the day, one of us is at the other building. We use twelve to twelve-thirty as our transition time, and the person who's at Merrill will come over to Law Liberty. So, we have a quick, what's going on here, what's going on there before the switch takes place, and then we go to our respective schools at that, at that point. On days one, three, and five, I stop my day at Law Liberty, and, and Mrs. Richards is at Merrill. And then on days two and four, I stop my day at Merrill, and Mrs. Richards is at Law Liberty at that time. Our calendar is all colorful colors and all sorts of different things to, just to keep things on track. A lot of time goes into planning the daily operations for each school because we are planning two of everything. For example, typically Merrill and Law Liberty had their open houses on the same evening. However, this year we had to change that, so Mrs. Richards and I can attend both of them. Also, for kindergarten orientation, we switched back and forth several times about the day. As you know, kindergarten orientation takes place on the first day of school, so that I could be there to greet the one hundred and thirty-seven kindergarten, kindergarten and their families. Fortunately, the ECPO, LPO parent meetings are on different nights, so we didn't have to change anything, so I could be at, attend both of those meetings. We consistently check in with the staff, and we have received positive feedback from everyone. Our goal is to make sure all staff members continue to feel supported and appreciated. And I have to say, the greatest joy for me thus far is being with our former students. I've always loved being at Merrill School, but I've always said, it's a two-year school, but just when you get to know the kids, when you get to know the families, they move on. And now, being back with those families, being with the good families, it's been, it's probably a great joy, so I thank you for that. Mrs. Richards is going to share her experience with us.
Good evening. Thank you, everyone. It's great to be here from, speaking to you from a building perspective. As you probably know, this is my seventh year in the district. In first six, I was at Central Office as the coordinator of teaching and learning for the humanities. And I'm, you know, trying my best to continue to do that, do the best of my ability, while also being present in both buildings every day. And I have to say, on a personal note, that it's been a real joy for me to be back in a building with children. You kind of forget how wonderful it is when you're away from that for a few years, getting to know the eight hundred children, trying to get to know them all by name, not quickly enough for some of them who every day come and see me, who know my name yet. But it, it's been great getting to already start to build those relationships, inform those relationships, you know, trying to balance that, and also, you know, staying in contact with colleagues in other buildings and different principals and administrators. But we've been really making it work, and, you know, I think that really, this wouldn't work at all if we didn't have the staff we had in both buildings. I know Deb would agree that, you know, from day one, no one complained, no one, everybody was like, how can I help? How can we make this work? Everybody, you know, sharing things that at Law Liberty that, you know, went really well, that they want to make sure we continue, sharing things that maybe they wanted to see improved upon, everybody willing to jump in. And I know too, Mrs. Chickering and Mrs. Burns, and there's, yeah, they're the boss. Mrs. Burns was out this afternoon, and I was very nervous having to fill in that role for a little bit. But I mean, it's really, it wouldn't work in any school, but it definitely works with these two schools, and it's because of the staff and the kids.
Thank you so much. I, obviously, I'm a Rainham resident. I've had kids in those buildings, and I know a lot of parents had reservations when this was presented to them. How would it work? Would they have someone in the building? Would they have someone that would make those connections with the staff, with the kids? And I've had nothing but positive feedback. Like, you have really eased your fears that there is someone in the building, that you know the kids, you're making personal connections. There's not a time when there's not someone there that, if it's a staff member, they need someone, or if it's students or families. So, thank you for making this work. I know it's challenging, which we're trying to be positive, but I appreciate that you've, you've found creative ways to make it work. So, I appreciate that from a parent aspect as well. Do we have other questions and comments from members? Again, so, thank you so much. I appreciate it, and thank you for being here this evening. Next, we have the student advisory committee report. I would like to welcome our new student advisory committee for the school year. At the end of last year, the high school voted in two new members, Ms. Marissa Cabral and Mr. Jackson Cogshul. The student advisory committee also voted in Ms. Sophia King and Ms. Kayla Tijon Cisse as co-chairs for this year. I would like to say, Ms. Curly wasn't able to continue on as the advisory person, advisor of this year, so I just want to thank her for her help this past several years. It was very enjoyable to work with her and see how much she mentored the students and made that connection with them. That being said, Mr. Hoy has stepped into the role this year, so we'll welcome him. Thank you, Mr. Hoy, for being here, for taking that role with him. The committee, so as we know, the messages of law states, the school committee must have five-member student school committee advisory council, voted in by their peers by June first of each year, and they are to meet throughout the school year when the school is in session. The student committee is to vote a chair, which is a non-voting, a non-voting member of the school committee. I would like to now welcome Ms. Tijon Cisse to the microphone.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you're having a wonderful start to the school year. My name is Kayla Tijon Cisse, and I'm one of the student school committee board's co-chairs. It's a pleasure to speak at these meetings for another year. I'm a senior this year, and this is my second year on the committee. Along with speaking before you each month, I'm a member of the culture club, newspaper club, student council, and the vote president of our healthcare club, Osveraca High School. I'm also a member of the girls' track team and the historian of our National Honor Society. I also spend my time as a Harvard Princeton EMS and American Heart Association ambassador, promoting life-saving CPR and helping to pass a law in Massachusetts to acquire CPR and first aid training as a high school recreational partner. I am so excited to share with you the latest developments and happenings at our high school every month. As part of our report for this evening, I would like to recap how both the boys' and girls' soccer teams have been performing so far. The boys' varsity soccer team has a record of five wins and one tie, and the girls with three wins, two ties, and one loss. They have both been playing against teams across the state such as Derby, Whitman Hansen, Dartmouth, and Sandwich. This week or every week on the morning announcements, we highlight both of the outstanding teams and wish them the best of luck in the beginning of the season. Thank you for your time, wishing you all a fresh start of the school year, and I look forward to speaking again at our next year. I now welcome Sophia King to the stage.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, School Committee Superintendent Powers. My name is Sophia King, and I'm one of the student school committee board's co-chairs. I'm thrilled to be standing before you today. I have foretold presenting to you over these next few months. I'm a senior this year and have been a member of this committee for three years now. In addition to being a part of this committee, I'm a member of TJ's Bar Robotics, National Honor Society, Year Club, Yearbook Club, New York Data Honor Society, a student leader, the class of twenty-twenty-sixth is treasurer, the photographer for the high school's football team, and a member of the girls' varsity swimming back team. These are the groups that I'm a part of, the most topics celebrating forward to you this year or this upcoming school year, alongside any news and issues to hear about across the student population. The only update that I have made today is that TJ's Bar Robotics has started the odd saving competitions, which is to say that we're having other schools competing in last year's game, or so we can refer to the new game at least in January. This previous Saturday, we competed, we competed at Malrose High School at an event called the Rooster, alongside many other great teams from New England, and managed to win the competition with our alliance. And alliance is two other teams, and then our own, so a three-game struggle. We're incredibly proud of both our drive team and our alliances. Well, that was the only problem I thought it's update I had for today. I'd also like to say a major thank you to the committee board and all the people they work with for doing their best to help all the district's schools during this time. While the over- with the over-est that we are, our schools could have struggled greatly during the school year, however, the school committee stood up and helped our schools with being their standing and maintain as much funding as possible. Through your help, they're not learning major changes, and our teachers have helped continue that effort. For that, I applaud and thank you. I now welcome Sydney Smith to the stand.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lisa Maxet. I'm another member of the student school committee advisory board. This is my second year in this position, and I'm a junior at the high school. Currently, I'm trying to juggle my extracurriculars and my academics. Over the summer, my global essays submitted to the John Law Global ICA competition were shortlisted and is leaving for River Lake. It's my hope that I'll be able to handle my core advanced placement classes and balance my GPA in order to join the National Honor Society, while also having enough time to get my license, read, dance for my thirteenth year, write, and be vice president of my class. This brings me to the event I'll be recording on tonight, junior elections. Out here, our previous advisor, Ms. Berry, was a pushing letdown. We had two advisors step up to the challenge, Ms. Boe and Ms. Tijon. This new challenge was about the middle of the season, where I will be, where I will run to be elected vice president, and my fellow student council, student school advisory board member, Marissa Cabral, wants to be re-elected treasurer. Our nomination forms and twenty-five class members and our four faculty member signatures, along with my speeches, have been surveyed. Now it's time for speeches to be read during Sunday of Monday, and go to class at twenty-twenty-seven to pick their class officers. That concludes my statement for tonight, and I now welcome Marissa Cabral to the stage.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Marissa Cabral. I'm a junior at VR and a new member of student school committee advisory board. I'm excited to be a part of this group here today. I've connected with VR in many ways over the years, such as being with VR March Day for three years, where this year I'm on the Hall of Saxons section here, and in the Music Honor Society try-in, I've been a math team at the Math Honor Society in the Hall of Fame, and a girls' varsity tennis team, and a student lead-up guy. We also have been working at TJ Madsen time and volunteering at St. Anne's Church in Rainham. I look forward to sharing updates on these various activities that means the months to come. My update today is about the VR March Day competition that we hosted on September thirteenth. Our band participated alongside four other bands from across New England, who scored first place in the one A division. The event holds about a VR music listeners, raises thousands of dollars to support the entire music department, such as providing scholarships to seniors and sponsoring food trucks. Other bands such as Abbott High School, Eastbridge Water Junior Senior High School, Milford DeGenture High School, and Luxon Melville Rouge High School participated in the event. The date featured four food trucks, a big sale, a fifty-fifty raffle, and more. The competition was unique, and each band had dedicated one-on-one time with politic judges who provided insight and feedback on all bands' performances. This allowed bands to make improvements to the show early on in the season. Our show, Dynasty Spear of the Trojans, will be performed at three more competitions this season and a few more of the games. The VR March Day will also participate in a track from Patrick St. Gray and Ray and the Union this Sunday. Come out and support the band. I now welcome Jackson Cogshul to the stage.
Good evening. My name is Jackson Cogshul. I am a sophomore, and this is my first year part of this group. Along with this group, I am part of the math team, Breaking Lives. Last two weeks was the first meeting for Breaking Lives that I attended. The, we're at this meeting, and I went over the goals of the group and the various initiatives in it. The goal of Breaking Lives is to prevent substance use by working with the community to advocate its awareness. This is accomplished through several different initiatives. The initiative I supported last year and will continue to participate in this year is the fifth way nutrition program, where we give presentations, get voters in the water and rain and play games with them to, to help, to help reach our goal of preventing substance use. I look forward to continuing to participate in these groups along with others that have done to join this year. Thank you.
Nice job. Thank you to our student advisory council for your report. I know we had two members that are new, so that was their first time. So, nice job, got it over with, and thank you. Your report is one of the best things that we look forward to, so thank you for being here and for giving your report. Thank you for Mr. Hoy for taking us on. So, we appreciate all of you for being here and for giving your report as well. So, thank you very much. We look forward to next month. Next, we have administrative and school committee reports. We have the report of Mr. Powers Superintendent.
Thank you. They certainly are a back to follow. I don't know if I'll do it justice. They're so involved, it makes me think I need to do more in my life. But I do want to take this opportunity to really acknowledge, you know, our students really represent our whole student body, and the amazing activities that they're involved in, the amount of activities they're involved in, really speaks to the quality of students that we have at Bridgewater Rainham. And I know sometimes that our high school and our, and our schools are not always looked at favorably, but I, I think those that are in the know, those that, you know, work there, or attend there, or to hear the amazing things that happen at high school, know truly what a special place our high school, and really our district as a whole is. So, congratulations to you, you know, you students, simply just amazing and impressive. I'm so proud of you, your superintendent. You make my job easier every day, and I can't thank you enough. So, well, job well done. I did want to just provide an updated overview on the opening of school. It has gone remarkably well, you know, year in and year out. I've been able to stand here before you and report that, thankfully, and I've found some good. But I know it also starts with our amazing staff that we're surrounded by, from our facilities department, getting our schools ready, to our, our teachers, our faculty, our support staff, our chat wells, anyone that's involved with our students on a daily basis, getting our schools ready for opening day. Obviously, you know, despite our situation this year, I certainly haven't felt as though that we haven't opened successfully. Our teachers have welcomed and embraced all of our students back, and again, you know, we all have a collective responsibility to, to ensure our mission is met, and that's excellence in education for all. And by the actions of all of our faculty and staff thus far, we can tell that they have fully embraced that despite what we've been brought up this year. And how we achieve that mission certainly is going to look different this year than others, but it doesn't mean that anyone's less committed. So, I, again, I did want to just acknowledge and thank the staff. I'm so fortunate to be surrounded by them, and obviously the administrative team, you know, they are really kind of, you know, the backbone of this district. I'm fortunate to lead it, but they are really the ones doing all the, the work, and so I want to thank all of them as well. In your package, you have several pieces of information. The first, obviously, I shared this last week when we met with the founder of Bridgewater, John Rainham. It's just some updated enrollment information. I did try to include another document for you. So, the first one that you see is just a biography representing our enrollment over time. As I shared last week, we're hovering right around that five thousand four hundred. Last week, I think we're at forty-six, now we're at forty-five. We do have some pending registrations, as I mentioned, and pending because, you know, we're not hundred percent sure we're actually going to fulfill their enrollment responsibilities. Last week when I shared out, we had seventy-three pending registrations. Megan and her team have really reached out to those families that have started that process, and now we're down to thirty-five pending registrations. So, of those seventy-three, we're now, they've identified thirty-five families that it looks as though they're going to move forward with the registration process, but those other forty, so families, they decided to enroll elsewhere. And so, thankfully, you know, because we see they're pending, we really don't know how long it's going to be seventy-three students that are going to have to place into our schools and increase our class size. But right now, we're looking at thirty-five, and obviously we'll continue to monitor that as the fall unfolds. The other document you have in your packet is just the district's enrollment over time, and what I, really, this is just information that's available to the public in general. It comes free from the Department of Development and Training Uh, it comes free from the Department of Elementary and Second Amendment Education's website. Uh, but what I tried to do was, and as you know, that really is based on October one, that's when DESI certifies our enrollment, uh, based on our seat count on October one. But what I did was I obviously included a very prepared chart. But this information in that, that top chart that you see is as of, uh, today, so the twenty-fourth of September. Obviously, once we get that, uh, enrollment data certified by DESI, which typically doesn't come out until later, uh, December, January, uh, obviously we'll update this. But we'll continue to update this based on the information that we know, uh, around enrollment. But you can see, obviously by grade level, uh, by school and then overall enrollment and you have the historical data there. And then you're familiar with the last page in your document, uh, in that Google sheet, which is just the overall class size average to the impact. I, I think, you know, the failed override really has had the greatest impact on our class size. Obviously, there's some other consequences of the failed override, but really what we're seeing, the greatest impact is on our class size. As I, as I've explained to you, we did everything we could to try to maintain, uh, I, I don't want to say low class size, not really grades, uh, but class size that was not significantly different than what we had in years past with the lower grades. Uh, so we are looking at, as you can see, when you review that and this information has been sent out to parents and we'll continue to update it as we go. But, you know, high twenties, twenty-six, twenty-seven, uh, twenty-eight and our lower grades, obviously those numbers start to creep up as you start to go up in the grades. Uh, so, you know, the intermediate grades, three, four, five, they're hovering high twenty-eight, twenty-nine, some thirties. And then obviously, once we get into middle schools, it's really where we start to see the greatest impact. And we do have some middle school classes of thirty-five, thirty-six. And then when we get into the high school, um, you can see, you know, we listed it by core class, but some of our electives, because we lost, uh, a large number of electives, you know, they're in the, in the mid to high thirties, uh, some forty. I know, uh, obviously we had some, some very big classes at the middle school, at high school level. And really that has to be a focus of ours going forward, how do we not just reduce class size, but how do we bring back some of those offerings that our students, uh, were once able to take advantage of? Uh, thankfully, we would be able to partner with Bridgewater State University. I did mention, uh, prior that they were willing to create a dual enrollment program specific to our high school students. And it certainly doesn't replace all the electives we lost, that they're offering a few classes this fall and I hope to be able to a few more, offer a few more in the spring. Uh, but really, uh, we appreciate their partnership and their willingness to try to help us out, uh, given our, given our situation. Uh, when you look at our total staffing, uh, we have lost forty-eight staff members. And then that, you know, isn't just about class size, it's about operations and looking at other areas of the district where it, it has had a negative impact. But as, as we talked about, uh, people have not shied away from their work, they've embraced additional responsibility. And they're really trying to rise to, uh, the, the challenge and, and meet that in front of them. Uh, but we had seen, you know, the registration office, you've heard me talk about, um, you know, Megan, her team are as great as they are, they are down positions. Our quarter of student family supports who worked out of the registration office were also helping registration. Our transportation assistant who also worked out of that office for helping registration. So really, if, you know, we're down two people in that office, it does mean you've had some delayed registrations. So students, uh, you know, taking longer to process them and actually get them into school is something that Megan and her team are working as, as hard as they can, uh, to be able to do that. Obviously, you've heard, you know, how amazing the clubs and activities we have at the high school. But we do have, uh, we've had some challenges staffing some of those, um, club positions, just because we simply don't have the amount of staff that everyone's had. And, uh, you know, same thing with some coaching positions, middle school sports, you've heard that, uh, you know, we have one team that's not running and we couldn't staff it. We were delayed in rolling out some girl middle school sports programs because we had, uh, challenges finding, uh, coaches. Uh, so again, some, you know, consequences of, of that. Uh, we did have to eliminate one of our banding course positions at the middle school. I know school committee has been a strong advocate for increasing those opportunities. And over time, we were able to have two banding course teachers at the middle school level. But unfortunately, uh, for this year, we'll all go back down to one, so we do have one teacher going between the two middle schools to provide banding course opportunities. Uh, you know, obviously, transportation overall, uh, has run, uh, really well. We have had some challenges like we do every year, um, and this year is no different. But we do have some late buses and obviously late vans and I know you've heard those. Uh, we've had several parents reach out, so we're not saying that transportation is perfect. Uh, some of those were just, you know, uh, first few day, uh, hiccups, uh, and then some continue to linger on, being consistent problems. We, uh, have met with Lucini in person as a follow-up. We were talking to them almost on a daily basis to try to tackle some of these issues. Uh, right now, we, we do have a, a few open driving positions, driver positions. Uh, we had, uh, several, uh, or Lucini has several that they are going through the certification and licensing process right now. Uh, so we hope that in the next, you know, two to three weeks, they'll be able to bring on additional drivers. Uh, so in some cases, what's happened is we've had to double up buses, uh, you know, so in, because we don't have enough drivers, we've had to, you know, split routes. And that has created challenges, you know, some of the routes are running long, um, upwards to, you know, almost an hour. And depending on what time they're arriving at school and leaving school, uh, you know, they could be getting home at four-thirty, almost five o'clock. And we all know that's unacceptable and Lucini agrees that that is not their, their role. Uh, and they want to be able to provide, uh, you know, high quality transportation, which for the most part they do. But they know there's some, there's some challenges, uh, ahead of them that they need to fix. And so they're, they're working on that. And, you know, uh, again, we're always going to have hiccups here or there, uh, much like when we have, uh, a teacher that's out and worrying with the higher substitute teacher. It's very different. We can say, here's your classroom, here are your lesson plans. Putting a substitute driver in on a route that they're not familiar with now driving through town while trying to, uh, you know, supervise a, a bus of fifty, sixty students isn't quite the same. So yes, they, uh, much like us, have substitute positions, uh, but it, it's significantly different. But we're still working with them and we're confident that we'll get that, um, uh, you know, some of those issues minimized as we go. Also, uh, you know, obviously, you've heard from Ms. Richards, uh, she is working out in her own livelihood now. Uh, while she still is trying to, uh, perform many of her duties at the district level, which we so appreciate. Uh, but we know that we've had to sacrifice some of those responsibilities. Uh, unfortunately, we just learned that, uh, Ms. Joyce, uh, will be moving on from the district as well. So, you know, Ms. Joyce is our STEM coordinator, so Ms. Richards counterpart, Ms. Richards oversees humanities and Ms. Joyce oversees STEM, uh, math and science. Uh, she's going to a different district in, in a promotional position, uh, as well. So we wish her well, she's done an amazing job for us. But that's two positions we're now down in teaching and learning. And obviously, that's, that's what we do, right? That's our core, we're all about teaching and learning and student achievement. Uh, they have done, uh, amazing as has our, our staff members over the last couple of years to really put some strong structures in place around teaching and learning and instructional practices, resources. And, you know, it, it does, you know, take you to, to cause pause and, and wonder, you know, if, if we don't want to take a step back. And obviously, uh, we can't afford to look at our, you know, achievement data, uh, recent achievement data and, and hopefully not future achievement data. But we can't afford to go backwards. We have to continue to move this district forward and that's my responsibility and my charge and one that I, I hold, you know, wholeheartedly and embrace and take on. And so that a lot of those responsibilities will fall to me and to, to Ms. Barry and, um, you know, blogs who look to the future about how we can, uh, possibly restructure, you know, our administrative team to take on some of those responsibilities. I did, um, want to just, you know, again, give a couple of quick updates. As you may or do not be aware, certainly if you're a parent in the district, you probably see some communication around an in-school dental program. Uh, we did have a community organization, Commonwealth Global Oral Health Services, reach out, which was to see who would be interested in providing, uh, onsite, uh, dental assessment, dental, uh, minor dental care. It really is a referral program for other community-based, uh, dental programs. Uh, speaking with Ms. Brennan, uh, our nurse dear, uh, they do see a significant amount of visits to the nurses' office that are actually, uh, related to students, uh, access to, uh, you know, dental care and, uh, you know, having trouble accessing those, uh, care and, and services and then obviously the process and health problems for the students. And so she said she thought there, there could be a need for that. And so we did, uh, send out some information to families and the response so far has been positive. Uh, what the Commonwealth Global Oral Health Services would do is they'd come up, set up, set up a space, uh, in one of our schools. Uh, and obviously it's all through consent, so parents have to consent, uh, we're not just calling students down and, and, you know, and that's to fill the cavities and really, um, it, it's obviously all through consent, but they're, they do an assessment. They would obviously, um, you know, see if the student requires any further service and obviously refer that. So they'll, they'll be able to do basic assessments, basic care there, uh, but it's not as though that, you know, we're, you know, not doing any, uh, institution or anything like that, anything significant. But, uh, this organization has been great, uh, they've been around for, for over forty years. Uh, they work, uh, not just with schools, but they also work with other community agencies, uh, the Department of, uh, Youth Services as well. Uh, and, and so we're, we're excited about this opportunity. We're also, you know, going to proceed cautiously, we want to make sure this works and, and is, uh, well received and that is doable for our schools. We don't want to view it as it, it's a burden for our administrative team to try to organize. We really think this could be a positive. I think, uh, just as easy as school pictures, it was, uh, it was the comparison. So our, our principals, uh, all cringes at that, they're like, school pictures are not easy, so don't, don't do that comparison. But, uh, we, we, we're, we're excited about this program. So I did want to just share that. And then, uh, also that, uh, you know, obviously I know Ms. King, you reported out on this that we had our joint meeting last week. I haven't been able to meet with both town, uh, both towns, uh, with our team, uh, with Ms. Babalola and Ms. Barry, with the town of Bridgewater, uh, Mr. Casanova Davis and Ms. Corini. And then on the Rainham side, we were able to connect with, uh, Mr. Byrnes and Mr. Lavalet as well. So we started to have the conversation first and foremost, uh, you know, just about the current state of our budget FY twenty-six, the planning process for FY twenty-seven, the timeline, but also some of the other things that we've talked about, shared, uh, you know, trying to figure out now that we're on a different cycle with capital, how can we, um, you know, all come to some type of consensus around a timeframe, a process? So those are meetings that we're going to be scheduling in the near future to continue to work through. And we'll continue to work, much like we did last year, where we met with them monthly, uh, to talk about the budget. Uh, but also we want to make sure that, you know, not just, uh, what we're talking about in our meetings. And I know this is, uh, Ms. King's intent for these larger meetings with both towns, that what has happened with, with the three of us, so the three bodies here is getting expanded and shared with the, the town, the town council, select board and obviously the greater community. Uh, and then I, I, I know, again, this thing, I don't want to get ahead of myself, but I know we're going to be talking about sports fees. I did have some updated information I'm happy to share now or in the week. Okay, um, so we, I, I know I shared some preliminary information with you the last time, uh, that we had approximately about three hundred and seventy-five, uh, athletes registered for fall. Uh, and speaking with Mr. O'Connell, once they were able to go through that and work with the coaches, they actually only had three hundred and nineteen students rostered. Uh, so somebody may have signed up but actually then didn't, you know, try out for the team or, uh, you know, decided not to fall through. Uh, so we have three hundred and nineteen, uh, athletes rostered for the fall. When compared to last year, you know, we had a hundred eighty-nine, uh, male athletes for the fall. We have a hundred and fifty-eight this year, so down thirty-one. Last year for female athletes, we had a hundred eighty-six, this year we had a hundred sixty-eight, so down eighteen. So we're down, uh, not a significant number, not as much as I was potentially anticipating. So that, that's nice to see that, you know, the athletes are still coming out. Uh, in terms of, uh, collecting the usage fees, obviously you know, we have raised that price to six hundred dollars. Uh, Mr. O'Connell and his staff and high school staff and, uh, Ms. Robashow and, and, uh, Mr. Prescott are working diligently to make sure all those funds are collected. To date, there have been two hundred and sixty-five payments received. We do have a number of, uh, families that, uh, you know, uh, do require a waiver, uh, so those families have been accounted for as well. And then, and you know, we're at that point where, uh, Mr. O'Connell and his team and our team have, have made contact with every family that has yet to pay. Coaches have talked to their, uh, student athletes about that. We're at that point now where, uh, you know, if they don't receive, um, you know, the fund by the end of this week or some type of outreach that, uh, unfortunately going forward, the, the students will not be able to, you know, participate. Uh, and we've already started to talk about a process for the winter to make sure that, you know, we're able to, uh, collect those funds as soon as possible. So we, you know, we definitely need to hear at least to have an outreach from the family. And I know they've made connections with all of the families, uh, I think feels what they have been playing a place and that hopefully by the end of the week that all of our families that, uh, need to pay will have paid. Because we don't, we don't want to exclude athletes, that's, that's not our hope and I know that's certainly not your hope. Uh, but, you know, we have had to do that in the past if someone hasn't paid and, um, you know, it's, it's our hope going forward that we don't have to do that. As far as middle school sports go, uh, we are, uh, offering boys soccer at Rainham Middle School. Unfortunately, we're not able to get enough, um, female athletes for the soccer team, so there won't be a team. I know, uh, Mr. Koo is, uh, potentially going to roll it out to fifth grade. And then there was some talk among the team that, uh, they didn't, they had several sixth and seventh and eighth grade, uh, female students drop out. And so they even bringing fifth graders on would have made a, a difference. So unfortunately, they weren't able to field a team this year. And at Bridgewater Middle School, there's twenty, uh, twenty on the boys soccer team and fourteen on the girls soccer team. In terms of funds raised, uh, for Rainham Middle School, uh, we have had twelve athletes fall out of thirteen after we're paid. Uh, and the thirteen family, uh, has already been, uh, uh, you know, contacted and they are in the process of getting a payment in. Bridgewater Middle School was really, um, got a late jump, they just, uh, completed their rosters at the end of last week. So certainly payments have just out of the commin now. Uh, we have collected, uh, a three thousand dollar between the boys team and the girls soccer team. That's far, but obviously because those, uh, rosters just have submitted, we know that they'll take a little bit more time to get those payments in. But we are, uh, you know, headed in the right direction and, and those payments still continue to come in. And we'll see what happens for, uh, winter and, and spring and, uh, certainly keep you updated as, as we go. Happy to answer any questions, but that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Do we have questions, comments from members? Thank you so much.
Next we have my budget subcommittee report. On September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five, the budget subcommittee met at five thirty PM at the superintendent's conference room. In attendance was Mrs. Staffordport, Mr. Loach, Mr. Loach, Mr. Fitzgibbons, Superintendent Powers, Assistant Superintendent Barry, Ms. Babalola, Ms. Robashow, Ms. Healy, Ms. McDougal, the reporting secretary and myself. Ms. Hoi Thomas also intended as a member of the public. Uh, first, uh, discussion that we did have was fiscal twenty twenty-six budget discussion. Uh, where Mr. Powers gave his update and overview of the current budget, staffing and classroom sizes, which he just gave us this evening as well during his report. Just my own personal notes on that, um, just, I know there was a lot of talk after the override, um, that it would mean larger classroom size. But I just want the public and the community to know what that specifically means. It means that there is an effect in every classroom. I know we're trying to be positive and have a good mindset, but it is affecting specifically every classroom from kindergarten through twelfth grade in various ways. So it's not just a general vague, large classroom sizes or loss of electives. It means a financial impact to the district for sports because we're down athletes, which we account for that in our operational budget. It's a mental health aspect of those athletes that may not be playing sports, but really should be having that outlet, um, at the, at the middle school and the high school level. Um, at the middle school level, we're now down teams that were not running. Obviously, this is personal to me, my daughter is on that soccer team that's not running. Um, so they're not going to run that team and she's thinking ahead to high school, is she going to have the, have the skills necessary to try out for high school? So I'm sure she's thinking that, there's lots of other girl athletes in the school thinking that and having that pressure now. Um, at the high school, TJ Robotics, we heard today, they just won their off-season competition. Um, they're going into their new season. They have lost their competition practice space at the high school because now that is a sixty-person study. Um, which is a lot of students in their, in their place that used to be their practice room that they have now lost. So I'm hoping that doesn't affect their season for the upcoming year. Um, forty classes cut at the high school has been devastating, lots of electives and AP classes that are, that we, students were counting on. BSU has been such a great partner to us. They have stepped up and I know we've always had dual enrollment, but their freshman class was so high this year, there was not many spots open to our students. So they have opened those online, um, dual enrollment classes at the high school. Um, so they're starting to roll that out and hopefully they'll continue that and expand that. But that is a cost to parents, they're, what, four hundred dollars or more? So that's a financial cost to parents as well. So lots of cuts at the high school, lots of clubs at the high school that our student advisory council talked about. I'm hoping they all have advisors this year, many clubs, because we've lost so many staff members at the high school, uh, are not able to run. Um, I've been in the middle school and the elementary school this week. Lots of teachers were positive and enjoying being back with their students, but they also have safety concerns. I know Mr. Hoi pointed that out last year at one of our meetings. He was concerned about that as a safety thing at the high school because of our lack of staff. Um, it's also a big safety issue at the elementary and middle, where that's a lot of students for the teachers to keep track of. Um, in the midst of doing their curriculum that they need to get done and make connections. In the midst of doing their curriculum that they need to get done and make connections with their students and make sure everyone's going in the same direction, they also have to keep track of all of those students, where they are, what they're doing at all times. So there's a lot going on in every classroom from kindergarten through 12th grade, and how it's affecting everyone. So I just want everyone to know that. We're doing our job up here as much as we can. I know the staff is doing everything that they can. They are pitching in, they are collaborating, they're working through it. But the day-to-day, it's affecting everyone. So I just want to thank everyone in the classrooms, everyone in the buildings, everyone that's doing their very best and doing double their very best this year. So I just want to put that out there and thank them. Moving on, fiscal year 2025 invoice payments. Ms. Babalola did submit a Budget Subcommittee for payment of invoices that were submitted from the prior fiscal year 2025 for payment. Ms. Babal explained that these invoices were submitted late due to a change in the Department Administration staff, staffing shortages, and the late special education submittals. They were in your drive. I will entertain a motion to authorize the Director of Business Services to pay invoices totaling $32,396.72 from prior fiscal year 2025. Motion made by Mr. Loach and second by Mr. Fitzgibbons. Do we have questions and comments on those invoices? Seeing none, all those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Mr. Powers did give an update on the athletic fees, which we did discuss at Budget Sub. He also did a draft of the budget timeline, which was in your drive, presented for the fiscal year 2027, and he did present that at the joint meeting that I will, that he mentioned and I will discuss. Acceptance of grants, we did consent to agenda. As an update, Mr. Powers did update us that Facilities is looking into a multi-year contract with an HVAC contractor, and more info will come regarding that from Mr. Jocko. We did approve the Budget Subcommittee minutes on August 11th, 2025. Another thing that we did note that was a question but did not have any financial impact that we determined, on September 11th, 2025, DESI did issue guidance indicating all districts with middle schools that are within a vocational collaborative should develop a middle school pathway, middle school pathway exploration policy and process, which should include language that documents how middle school students in the district are made aware and gain exposure. We do already have internal procedures within the district to make our middle school students aware of Bristol-Plumton Vocational Technical High School, so there should be no financial impact. Mr. Powers and his team is drafting an internal procedure outlining these procedures, as it was not mandated at this time by DESI, that's a policy. If that changes, it will go to Policy Subcommittee to review and approve. No action was taken at that time. Lastly, other, September 17th, 2025, the School Committee held a joint meeting with the Rankham Select Board and the Bridgewater Town Council. At that time, Mr. Powers presented an update on the current budget, school opening, class size, and staffing throughout the district. School committee members, select board members, and town councilors were able to make comments, observations, and ask questions. Our hope is to hold these meetings regularly throughout the budget season, to keep all members on the same page and up to date, and to have smaller joint working group meetings more often to work through the budget process together. The group agreed that if we need to look towards needing to go towards a potential override in the future, more education and information needs to reach the communities, and therefore, we need to find creative ways to go about that. Also, more time is needed, so we need to start that process now. Further, many members of the community discussed the potential need for an operational review or audit. This was discussed at life as to the scope, cost, necessity, and how the fee would be paid and by whom. It was requested by the Chair that the towns discuss the appropriation of the fee at their respective meetings and to come forward with a proposal on how the towns would pay for that. Mr. Powers was to work with Mr. Barnes and Mr. Casanova Davis to determine the possible scope of work, vendors, and a timeline. So we're going to schedule a working group meeting for next month potentially, and then the following month or January, another joint meeting prior to the budget preliminary presentation. At our October Budget Subcommittee meeting, we will be discussing the quarterly budget update from the Business Office and a base update. Do we have any questions from members regarding budget? Seeing none, the next Budget Subcommittee meeting will be scheduled for October 22nd at 6:00 in the lecture hall at the high school, right before our regular School Committee meeting, and that concludes my report. Next on the agenda, we have Policy Subcommittee Report with Mrs. Conrad LaBretta.
The Policy Subcommittee met on September 15th, 2025, and attends were myself, Mrs. King, Mrs. Hoi Thomas, and Mr. Ethrow, along with Mr. Powers, Mrs. Barry, and Mrs. Watson, the principal from the high school. We reviewed quite a few policies. The MASC Association of School Committees has recently updated numerous policies and put forth to the districts to review. I will just say, in context, is MASC updates policies, but districts are not required to accept their suggestions and those updated policies. So the first policy that was reviewed was policy GBEBC, was gifts to and solicitations reviewed by staff. Subcommittee discussed the update language presented by MASC regarding raffles and the associated risk around some of that, around raffles, and then how the policy would be enforced. The group decided the present policy was efficient, and the parent groups would be advised on state regulations regarding raffles and games of chance at the Biennial Leadership Meeting with the advisory groups, and that the leadership meeting, the leadership meeting would gather kind of the parent groups to talk around that, and no action was taken. The second policy that was reviewed was JJE, and this was around student fundraising activities. It was a similar discussion around the changes, the suggested changes around raffles. The group decided the current version of the policy required no updates, and so no action was taken on this policy. And maybe I should just say, some of the recommendations from MASC was that raffles, again, you need to follow state law and regulations, and the district would kind of enforce that. And some of that is from, a lot of clubs that people don't know, clubs, sports teams do raffles in this, in our community for many things. And some of the town, local towns, state regulations require permits to be pulled from towns around some of that. And so we really were going to leave that up to the clubs and sports teams to monitor that and to comply with whatever rules, and so the district was not going to get in the middle of that. The next item that was reviewed was policy KBE, and that's around relations with parent booster, parent booster organizations. Some of the new changes suggested by MASC included language requiring that they be 501-3C organizations. And although the suggested changes by MASC was slightly shorter than our current policy, we felt that our present policy was more solid and did not require changes. And the Subcommittee decided to take no action and keep our current policy. Our current policy, too, does not require that organizations be 501-3C, that they have 501-3C status, but they be approved by, I think, the Superintendent or the DESI committee. We felt it would be really restrictive to require parent booster organizations to have to be 501-3C status, have that status, because it is a very lengthy process to become 501-3C. The next policy that was reviewed was ECAB, was access to buildings and grounds. The group discussed BR's version of the policy and compared it to the MASC version. We decided no action would be taken at our meeting, but we would go back and potentially merge the ECAB policy with our, our, with a policy that we have that is similar, that was FG, Community Use of School Facilities, and we would do that at further, at future meetings, excuse me. So no action was taken. The next policy reviewed was KI, was Visitors to School. We had quite a lengthy discussion around this, with some concerns around some of the new language. So we did, after reviewing it, we decided to, that we would update the policy, and so that we would bring the updated policy to, and you will have a copy of that, bring it to the School Committee. And so at this point, I will make a motion to waive the first reading of KI, Visitors to School.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad LaBretta, second by Mr. Loach. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? And that will have a second reading at the October meeting?
And if people have questions or comments, please feel free to contact me about them. The next item on the agenda was, I will make a motion to waive the second meeting of ING Animals in Schools.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad LaBretta, second by Mr. Loach. Questions and comments on that second reading or waiving? All those in favor?
This was a policy that we reviewed at our last meeting, so at this time, I would make a motion to adopt policy ING Animals in Schools.
Motion made by Mrs. Conrad LaBretta, right, second? Second by Mr. Loach. Questions and comments on the approval of that? All those in favor? Any opposed?
That next item was around, Mr., our Superintendent Powers gave us an update on the competency determination. So we did receive that update from Superintendent Powers. Again, because there is no requirement of IMCAS for graduation, and districts are required to create a competency determination policy. Superintendent Powers and Principal Watson explained, you know, how they researched what other districts are doing and the need for a policy. It was determined that the competency and what mastery looks like was the biggest obstacle. Again, there were, some districts were using midterm grades, in which we didn't think that was an accurate kind of description of a student's ability. It was decided that the passing of the class was what we would align with kind of backward IMCAS, or, you know, get what we used to use for IMCAS testing. So the next meeting, I believe, the Superintendent will review the policy that is being outlined or drafted this year. So no action was taken. The next item, which Ms. King talked a little bit on to the budget piece, was the notice recently by DESI around drafting a policy for working with vocational technical schools. And at this point, we, the district does have kind of an operational procedure, I will say. And given that, given that, we felt it should stay as the operational, or, there was a discussion at the meeting, but a discussion that it would stay operational at this point, and then it'd be an administrative process, and we would not adopt a policy. If it became challenged in the future, it was something that the Policy Committee at that point would review. I hope Mr. Powers has everything he wants to add.
All right, yes, thank you. Yes, so we do have to develop what we refer to as a middle school pathways policy. Really, when DESI was asked, you know, is that a School Committee policy, either webinar or the other day, and I'm actually attending another one tomorrow around this development, they said the regulations are somewhat vague. It doesn't specify whether it's a School Committee policy or an internal policy. Some districts said, well, you know, we already have something in place. And they said, well, whatever you do vocally to make sure there is something in place to, you know, follow through with that. So again, where, you know, we do have some vague language about, you know, middle school and our relationship with vocational technical education, but we've already started to draft a draft internal policy, you would call it, not something that we bring forward to School Committee. Certainly, if I get additional information that DESI clarifies that and says, yes, it has to be, I will obviously bring it back to you. Really, it's just memorializing what we currently already do. We do have to provide contact information to the vocational technical programs, so we provide, you know, names of students, contact information. We allow Bristol-Plumton, Bristol-Lagley, and the other vocational programs to come in and do a presentation. If we're invited to go there for a tour, we certainly let our students, or penalize, or we even organize a whole school tour. So it really is those things we have to have in place, things that we already do, so really it's just memorializing it.
Thank you. It was also kind of a compressed timeline, which was an issue, too, based on when they wanted us to buy, correct?
Yes, November 1st. And obviously, they're, you know, they're running webinars now around the details of it, and as many districts pushed back and said, that's just an unrealistic timeline, because if it's going to be a School Committee policy, you know, we obviously require two meetings. There was a district gone that said, you know, we require three. So they're looking at, you know, potentially three meetings to be able to get a policy approved. So there is a waiver process that we can apply for if we were to go down the path of making a School Committee policy. So it's, you know, pretty straightforward to apply for that waiver if we need to. But right now, we're just going to work on this internally until we're, to work on it.
Told to change guidance. Thank you. Anything else, Mrs. Conrad LaBretta? Thank you. Next, we have Bridgewater Rankham Education Foundation Report with Ms. Hoi Thomas.
Hi. The Bridgewater Rankham Education Foundation met on Monday, September 15th, and their agenda included several items. Preparations for this year's annual gala, starting night gala in March. They're working with the principals in the schools to award and distribute this year's enrichment funds and other community incentives that are in the works, such as Meet the Author. The upcoming Touch a Truck event is the Saturday after next, October 4th, at the O'Donoghue Middle School, from 10:00 to 1:00. That includes a sensory sensitive hour from noon to 1:00. And the admittance is a non-perishable food item. More information can be found on their website. My family was at the Touch a Truck in May, and it was a wonderful event, so I encourage your attendance.
Thanks. Ms. Hoi Thomas, do you know when the gala is going to be this year?
It is Saturday, March 14th.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Next, we have the IT Directors Report with Mr. Schatz.
Good evening, members of the School Committee, Superintendent Powers. For those that don't know me, I'm Michael Schatz. I'm the IT Director for BR. The IT Department successfully distributed a total of 676 Chromebooks to parents and guardians of fifth and ninth grade students. The distribution took place over four separate dates, ensuring that everyone who needed a device was able to receive one efficiently and with minimal wait times. The well-organized process helped the department manage the large volume of equipment and streamline that pickup experience for the entire community. This summer, the IT Department successfully imaged over 600 computers with Microsoft Windows 11. This proactive measure was necessary because the district's current operating system, Windows 10, will no longer be supported after October 14th by Microsoft. By upgrading these devices, the department ensured that the district's computers will remain secure and compatible with the latest software and security updates. This effort was a critical step in maintaining a stable and protected technology environment for the entire district. The capital project to upgrade the security camera system at Williams School has successfully completed. A major highlight of this project was that the system's programming was handled in-house by myself. This effort saved the district an estimated $5,000 in labor costs that would have otherwise been spent on external vendor. With this final installation, all schools in the district are now equipped with modern security camera systems, significantly enhancing the safety and security of our schools. This spring, two-factor authentication was rolled out to 650 faculty and staff as part of our ongoing commitment to safeguard institutional data as part of our ongoing commitment to safeguarding institutional data and personal information. Two-factor authentication adds an extra layer of security to the user's email login process. Instead of accessing your email with just your password, you will also need a second factor, your phone or hardware token. The first year of this two-factor authentication solution was funded by the state's municipal local cybersecurity grant. We were awarded thirteen thousand dollars for this grant. And lastly, I just want to thank my, my staff, Tom O'Keefe, Matt Tucker, and Walter Healy, our district's I.T. technicians, for success, for a successful school opening. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schatz. Do we have questions? Mr. Fitzgibbons?
Thank you. Mr. Schatz, with the rise of phishing, social engineering, et cetera, and I know I've seen a few emails to my school committee account that I've raised to you. How are we making sure staff understands and even more students understand not to click on every email and open every link that seems to be sent to you?
So for the last three years, we've implemented cybersecurity training through a program called Know Before, and that has been grant-funded. I feel that staff over the last few years have become very good at identifying phishing emails. And I just want to mention the, the purpose of the implementing the two-factor authentication. That was due to our cybersecurity insurance. They ask us every year for, you know, what, if we've implemented it. So now we finally say yes. And actually, the last year before we had it implemented, we had ten teacher accounts compromised, sending out scams, phishing. So that should eliminate our district teacher account being compromised.
Mrs. Davenport, do the students take it as well?
They do not. They don't take the training or, and they also don't have the two-factor authentication.
Or checking in the system.
And we have had student accounts compromised, so.
Thank you, Mr. Schatz. Appreciate it. Under new business, we have approval of general ledger warrants. I will entertain a motion to approve the general ledger warrants dated June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, August twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, and September fourth, twenty twenty-five. Motion made by Mr. Fitzgibbons, do I have a second? By Mrs. Davenport. All those in favor? Any opposed? We have one extension. Thank you. I do not have any other business. We do have another public comment. Do I have any members of the public? I do not. We will not have public comment. Under announcements, we have a Budget Sub Committee meeting, like I stated, on Wednesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at six P. M. at the high school lecture hall. The next regular school committee meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, at seven at the Rayham, I'm sorry, Bridgewater Rayham High School Lecture Hall. Do I have any other announcements? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn the September twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five school committee meeting at eight thirty-four. Motion made by Mr. Loach, do I have a second? Second by Mrs. Davenport. All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. Good evening.